It is seven o'clock. We do have a forum. We'll call the City Council Meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by myself and then the pledge of both the American Texas flag, led by Councilman Green. I wanted to just ask you at this time maybe to just remember all the true blessings that we have that we are given each and every day by our Creator and remember that He does love us in spite of our inequities and our sins, and He is always there for us. So if you would, and if you would like to, please feel free to join me as I repeat the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Honored, excuse me, I'm sorry, wrong one. Looking at this one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Let's get a help.
All right, no big deal?
Nope.
Start it over.
As usual, we have some proclamations and a presentation we'd like to make tonight. If I could ask Hillary Bowen to please come down and join me at this time, please. You know, we have a wonderful park in Recreation Department that does so much for our citizens, and not just our citizens here in our community, but the citizens all around us and from countries abroad. We just had a soccer tournament here about, what, three months ago, I guess it was, Bob, where we had people from England and from several, I think there was five different countries represented there. That is a tremendous asset to our facility to have the park and recreations that we do have in our community, which creates a wonderful quality of life for our citizens. And so with that, I'd like to make this proclamation tonight to Hillary. Whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of society, and whereas parks and recreation create lifelines and enrich life experiences for older members of our community, and whereas generating opportunities for people to come together and experience a sense of community through fan recreational pursuits, and whereas park and recreation agencies provide outlets for physical activities, socialization, and stress-reducing experiences, and whereas parks, playgrounds, nature trails, open spaces, community and cultural centers, and historic sites make communities attractive and desirable places to live, work, play, and visit to contribute to our ongoing economic viability, and whereas parks, greenways, and open space provide a welcome respite from our fast-paced, high-tech lifestyles while protecting and preserving our natural environment, and whereas park and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups, and the entire community, which positively impacts upon the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of our life. Now therefore, I, Dean Ukert, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Recreation and Parks Month in the City of Lewisville, along with the National Recreation and Park Association, encourage all citizens to celebrate by participating in their choice of pleasurable recreation, park, and leisure activities with family, friends, and neighbors proclaiming the 16th day of July 2012.
I'd just like to, thank you. Council Mayor, thank you very much for your continued support. You do so much to help us provide great opportunities for the residents of Lewisville, so thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work. Okay. At the last meeting, we appointed our re- reappointment of some members on boards and commissions and appointed new members to boards and commissions. So at this time, we would like to present them with their certificate for the coming, or upcoming term and to swear them into their position. So as I call your names, if you would, come forward and then, if you would, and I'll give you your certificate, and then if you would, just stay up here and then we'll have you all sworn in at one time. I'm not sure how to pronounce this person's name. Is it, the masterful Mayor Gene Kerry? Would you come forward, Mayor Kerry? Gene is appointed to the Arts Advisory Board, place number six. Thank you so much, Mayor.
I'd love to.
Patsy Rowe, and Patsy has been appointed to the Arts Advisory Board, place number four. Mac Rogers. Mac has been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee. John Ling, I'm sorry, John. John Ling. And John has been appointed to the Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation, place number one. Alvin Turner, and Alvin's been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee. Debbie Engle, Debbie has been appointed to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, place number four. Michael Coleman. Michael's been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee. LeAnn Lowry. And LeAnn has also been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee. You know, believe it or not, we're actually seeing some stuff starting to transpire on this I-35. We think it might actually gonna happen now. Karen Locke. And Karen has been appointed to the Library Board, place number two. Janine Golden. And Janine has been appointed to the Library Board, place number six. Angela Bennett Ingle. And Angela has been appointed to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, alternate number two. And this gentleman here, Steve Griffin. Steve's been appointed to the Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation, place number three, I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee, and the Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation, place number two. Mr. Christian, we should appreciate your service. You know, Steve, how long have you lived in Lewisville, Steve?
Well, I'm 1941.
1941. Steve's been around for a while. He's been a great citizen all these years. We appreciate all your help, Steve. Jeanne Ann Cool.
Yeah.
Jeanne's been appointed to the Animal Services Advisor Committee, place number six. Bobby Mitchell. Bobby has been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee, and she's one of the peoples that's starting to make things happen on I-35. James Davis. And James has been appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, place number seven. Charles Emery. And Charles has been appointed to the I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee and to the Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation, place number five. Charles, thank you so much. Joel Brent Daniels. And Joel has been appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, place number three.
Do we have anyone else who didn't check in that needs to be sworn in? Okay, all right. You're fine, you're fine. What was your name?
Denise Jeffrey.
Okay, Denise Jeffrey. We do, she just didn't, I didn't check in, so we just have her.
This is Denise Jeffrey, and I know she's on the Animal Services Control Board because she serves on there with me, so I know she's on there. She's been reported. We thank you so much. Now, I just want to save a moment. I want to have, we got another one.
We need to have David come up also.
David, come on up here. I was wondering.
We try to catch y'all as you walk in, sometimes.
I, you know, didn't check in.
You're still gonna serve on our park board, though, aren't you?
That's right.
All right, David's gonna be, he's reappointed, he's gonna serve on our park. Let me tell you, this man is dedicated, let me tell you, because he's had a little struggles here in the last year or so, but he's recuperated now, doing great, and doing a wonderful job of serving your community. We appreciate all your help.
I appreciate all the Steve people saving my life.
They're up there. They're up there. We'll reach you, sworn in. We got anyone else that we missed? Here's David. And I just want to take this moment to say, I want all these people to come up first because these are the people that do so much of the work for us on the council. As you can see, we have a lot of different things going on in this community, not to mention budget and employees, personnel, all this type of stuff that goes on, but there's so much thing. And so we solicit the help and support of our citizens, and it's so wonderful that all these people, plus some others that couldn't be here tonight, that taken upon themselves to step forward and give up their time with their family and their loved ones to come and help our citizens here. So let's give them all a big round of applause, please.
You all raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Denise Jeffrey.
Do solemnly swear
Sondernly swear.
that I will faithfully
Faithfully.
execute the duties
Execute the duties.
of the office
Of the office.
of place number, state your place. Of the, state your board name. Of the City of Lewisville
City of Lewisville.
State of Texas
State of Texas.
and will to the best
Will to the best.
of my ability
My ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution
Constitution.
and laws
And laws.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and of this state
And of this state.
and the charter
And the charter.
and ordinances
And ordinances.
of this city
Of this city.
and I furthermore
And I furthermore.
solemnly swear
Sondernly swear.
that I have not
That I have not.
directly or indirectly
Directly or indirectly.
paid, offered, or promised to pay
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
contributed nor promised to contribute
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
any money
Any money.
or valuable thing
Or valuable thing.
or promised any public office
Or promised any public office.
or employment
Or employment.
as a reward
As a reward.
to secure my appointment.
Secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. Congratulations to you all.
You know, it's really a testament to our city when you see two former mayors, county commissioners, former council members, and so many board members come back to serve this community as long as they live, and we really appreciate all their services. Now if I could have Ann come with me. There you are, Ann. Did you want to have anybody else come up, or who else would you have?
Janine and Karen.
Janine, you and Karen, come back up there, please. That's all right. Come on up here with us, please. We have a special award to give to our, our library this year. It's not the only year we've gotten it, but I can tell you firsthand that our library is one of the best in North Texas, period. My, my assistant, who's been with me 20 years now this year, whom was first hired, she was still going to school up at North Texas, and she went, finished school there, and she, then she went on and got her master's degree, and still works with me, and she has a master's degree in English literature. But during that entire time, and still to today, she uses, she doesn't live in Lewisville, she actually lives in Southern Denton, she uses the Lewisville City Library because she said it is so much more user-friendly and it's so much more accessible to the information that she needs. She prefers it over nothing against their college up there in any way, shape, or form, but she prefers that library over the college library up there. So it's a real testimony, and I can believe, because she's, she's pretty sharp, she always helps me, and it's really a testimony to what our city has done with our library, and a lot of it has been because of these people here and all the work that they've done over the years. So with that, the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association 2011 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award, the Lewisville Public Library has been awarded the 2011 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries awarded by the Texas Municipal League Directors Association and affiliate, affiliate organization, the Texas Municipal League. Of the 565 public libraries in the state of Texas, only 26 received this 2011 award. This is the seventh year in a row that the Lewisville Public Library has received this award. The Lewisville Public Library demonstrated excellence in all categories required to qualify. Categories in which the library was recognized include educational and cultural classes and events for all adults and families, summer reading classes, events, and incentives for all ages, services to underserved population, enhanced service to the public during the past year, and collaborative efforts, partnerships with community organizations. And I can tell you right now that Ann is one big factor. She's not the only factor, she'll tell you by far, but she is one of the biggest factors in this. So with that, Ann, ladies, I would like to present you with this plaque, and this plaque says, Texas Municipal Library Directors Association 2011 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award, presented to Lewisville Public Library.
Mayor and council, thank you very much. As always, I do appreciate your continued support. It is through your continued sustaining funding decisions that we, the library staff, are able to be the high-quality educational institution that we are for every part of our community. I'm excited to tell you that, on average, every day that this library is open, we serve 1,100 customers, we check out 1,900 items, we issue 25 new cards, and we offer two or more educational, cultural, and literacy programs and classes, including, for the last two years, financial literacy for adults and teens. These programs are attended by more than 70, 75 persons every day. And I know you are aware of this, I just want to remind you that summer reading is the highest indicator of continuing, maintaining the education a student learned the past year. And for that, I'm very proud to tell you, 3,800 citizens are registered for this summer reading club. Thank you.
We are truly blessed to have such wonderful citizens and team members that work here in our community. Next item on the agenda is the visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No more, no formal action may, may, can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did not have any cards filled out for this. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. We did not have any cards filled out, nor did anybody request any item to be pulled. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is consideration of a final plat for assured storage. Lewisville addition, a 7.203 acre parcel within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction located on the southwest quadrant of Sam Rayburn Tollway Frontage Road and Essex Boulevard with three variances to the Castle Hill Development Agreement. The subject plat is located within Castle Hills in the Lewisville extraterritorial jurisdiction. The 7.203 acre property is being divided into two lots, Lot One and Lot Two. The following variances are being requested by the owner. A dedication of street drainage and utility and pedestrian easements in lieu of right-of-way dedication for a deceleration lane and a right-turn lane along Sam Rayburn Tollway Frontage Road. Building setback from a waterline easement and sea screening between commercial and residential uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat in variance, a six, in variance, on a 6-0 vote at their May 15, 2012 meeting. Recommendation of council is to approve the plat and variance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, excuse me, approve the caption as stated above.
Have a motion to approve, approve as presented by Councilman Vaughn.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can I say something? I'm sorry. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is a second reading. Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the Lewisville City Code by providing for the prohibition of smoking in food products, establishments, bars, hotel, and motel rooms with certain exceptions, bowling centers, and within 15 feet of any opening to a place where smoking is prohibited. Providing for an offense, if, if the owner or person in control of an establishment fails to post or post non, no smoking signs, advise a patron that smoking is not allowed, or request a patron to leave after having been advised that smoking is not allowed. Deleting certain defenses and exceptions, providing for an exemption under order, exemption, outdoor seating areas of food product establishments meeting certain requirements. At the July 2nd, 2012, City Council meeting, the council approved the subject ordinance. However, due to the lack of a four-fifths vote by the council to adopt the ordinance on emergency basis, the ordinance has to be read on three separate days to meet the city charter requirements. This will be the second reading. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter Five of the Lewisville City Code by providing for the prohibition of smoking in food product establishments, bars, hotel, motel rooms with certain exceptions, bowling centers, and within 15 feet of any opening to a place where smoking is prohibited. Providing for an offense, if the owner or person in control of the establishment fails to post no smoking signs, advise a patron that smoking is not allowed, or request a patron to leave after having been advised that smoking is not allowed. Deleting certain defenses and exceptions, providing for an exemption for outdoor seating areas of food product establishments meeting certain requirements, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, and providing an effective date.
Okay, that brings us to reports. Nika? Bob? Everything going okay with our chief? Everything going okay with our big firefighters Olympics?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that we are hosting that this week, the City of Lewisville and the Fire Department. It's our 30th Annual Texas Firefighter Games. The, the events kicked off yesterday after opening ceremonies, and I can tell you, there are hundreds of firemen invading our city this week, along with a lot of them's families. There's a lot of activities going on every day this week. If you want to go to the Texas Firefighter Olympics website, you can see the list of activities and where they'll be located and times, but get a chance, come out and watch some of the guys as they participate in their events, and it's a lot of good competition and camaraderie, and it's a lot of fun to be a part of and be around the guys. So I'd invite you to come out if you can.
I apologize not being able to make the open ceremonies. It was, I chose, I didn't have to, but I chose to attend my, my mother-in-law's 80th birthday celebration, so I did that instead. But I know it'd be well, and I plan on trying to get out and attend a few of the events because I know they are a lot of fun. And that brings us to Melinda on the human resources. We need to make sure all our insurance premiums are paid in full because sometimes these things do require medical services. Anything else, Melinda? Chief Goller? Why did I say Goller? I'm sitting there looking at him, saying, I just called you Goller. Turbo. I'm sitting there looking, seeing Melinda, and then I sit there calling you Goller. I'm sorry. It's Melinda Goller, Chief Turbo. I apologize. Carol?
No sir, just need rain.
Just, we do need a little rain, don't we?
Yes, we, we're, our lake's officially two feet low now, and it's been
Is that right?
It's been probably since May, since it's been that low.
Well, I can tell you, Garland's getting a bunch of it. That's where we went for my mother-in-law's celebration. In the last four, five days, they've had like two and a half inches.
It's rained all around us, but nothing in our watershed.
Donna?
Yes, Mayor, the Sounds of Lewisville Music Series is continuing. We have three more performances. So tomorrow night, Tuesday night, we will have Key West. It's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. The next week, on the 24th, we're gonna have a band called Briefcase Blues, and then the final week will be Van Gogh's Ear. Now, all of these performances are held at the MCL Grand Theater in the courtyard, and they start at 7:00 PM, and you can bring your food. So we do invite everyone to come out and enjoy the great music. We've had great crowds this year. Also, A Chorus Line will be at the Summer Musical that'll be held this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and you can go online to the mclgrand.com website and get your tickets. It should be a great production. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Mr. Ferris? Yes, Mayor, didn't get a chance, last meeting, but I'd like to give her a short report. Couple of weeks ago, we had our grand opening of our Lewisville Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. Had a great day, had a good unleashing event. We, that day, we adopted 14 animals out of the center. So just want to remind the citizens that June 30th through July 31st, the City Council has waived the adoption fees and the registration fees. So come on fees. So come on out and check us out and have some fun and look at our animals.
We've gotten a lot of wonderful comments from citizens and from local media telling us what a beautiful center it was, and from the Humane Society staff has sent me a lot of information, sent me a lot of emails and stuff, amending us for what we did with this facility, and it is a truly remarkable facility, and we appreciate all you and your staff did and all the staff did on making this happen. Thank you. Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
One item, Mayor. Since Commissioner Mitchell is here, I want to congratulate her on adding another item to her resume, to be the, is it the executive board?
Yep.
Okay, president of the executive board of the North Central Texas Council of Governments. So, congratulations.
Councilman Durham?
Yeah, I just want to add more thing. If they're gonna come to the Sounds of Lewisville, and they're gonna bring food, stop at one of our great restaurants in Lewisville, The Go, most of them, we've got some great ones in Old Town, from Tierney's to Subway to all the way down Main Street and 30, 40, just along 35, just come and get something to go and get there. Also, want to remind everybody that early voting starts, but I'm gonna leave it up to Julie, sorry Julie, I didn't talk to you about it, I'm sure she's got it, to talk about the dates and times and voting election day.
Councilman Gilmore?
Like to have everybody pencil in August 17, Friday. LISD and, more importantly, Lewisville High School are starting a new tradition, and it is for all of the schools in the LHS feeder pattern. It is going to be called Hay Day, and we're looking forward to a lot of community interaction there. There's vendors that'll be there. If you're a business in Lewisville and you're interested in having a booth, please reach out to LHS and LISD. It'll be Friday, August 17, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Max Goldsmith Stadium. And I'll be there, because I got way too many kids in the feeder pattern.
Mr. King?
Council, I want to make you aware that you'll be getting your draft budget from the manager's office later this week, and remind you that the budget workshop is scheduled for August the...
13.
13th, Saturday, August the 13th, and that'll give you some time in between if you have questions, but you will be getting that later this week.
It starts at 9:00 AM, I believe. Am I correct?
8:30.
I don't remember what time we set for. Jeanne, do you remember?
I don't remember the time.
9 o'clock? Okay.
August what day?
13.
13th is a Monday.
Okay, I didn't think that sounded right.
Is it the 11th?
It's the 11th, okay. Okay.
That's two days before the 13th.
The 11th. 8 o'clock.
Councilman Ferguson?
Well, Donna had covered me, which is good, because actually, this week, I didn't have my email from giving me all the events, so it's a good thing you did that. Just one thing to add, for somebody that watches this on video, those Courtyard, MCL Grand, Sounds of Lewisville concerts are free, so be sure and come out. I've seen all but one and enjoyed every last one of them, so.
Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, Mayor.
Liz? Julie?
Just a reminder, the early voting for the primary starts on July the 23rd. It's Monday through Friday that week, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and we will be having early voting at the annex, and then election day is gonna be July the 31st, and you need to go to your polling location on that day, so encourage everyone to early vote.
With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition is Section 551.087. Deliberation regarding economic development negotiation will now convene into closed Is there any action to be taken, council? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Guerina, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.